So, so.
Matt, do you have your email?
Yep.
Could you give me a favor and copy the this meeting thing and send it to Bruce? Tell your guy that there's just Bruce Dr. Herbowski at.
The ones behind those desks down there that are hiding their phones.
Behind the desk?
The ones that are on Zoom.
Oh.
Most of them are zooming on their phones.
Huh?
A lot of them, I mean.
They're zooming on their phones.
They're zooming on their phones.
So, maybe you think that if I sent an open record request to one of them during a meeting that there would be absolutely no chance that one of them might be texting someone in the crowd and being advised on what to say?
Oh, I don't know about that, but who would they be? You know?
That would be, that's not a very good practice, is it?
It would be a difficult thing to pull off.
You know, I don't think it would be.
Well, it depends on what they're using to access it with. Like, another one that's about to hook up is using a phone, I think. Yeah, Bobby's on a computer.
Mm-hmm, Lou's on a computer.
Yeah.
Dave is.
Turn mine off.
So, I mean, like, I don't have one. I don't have a.
Not a doll.
Cell phone with me, Matt does have a cell phone with me, you know?
Everybody on that's gonna get on?
Not, we're still waiting on. Can you send it to him?
Yeah. It's going on right now.
See the O three six, that's Leon. And the O two three, I'm not sure who that is.
I'm here, be ready.
Gotcha. Who is, uh, O two three? Remuted right now.
Can you hear me, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one is the phone one?
Mm-hmm.
Or unmute that one?
Yeah.
Well, try him. Hello?
Who is, uh, O two three? Last three days.
That's Ricky Brown, Ricky Brown's cell phone.
Yeah.
You can mute it back Ricky if you want.
Why? Okay. I'm out.
Okay, so we're waiting on, uh, uh.
Bruce.
Hey, John, can you call in and see if he can sound with it? Um. Bruce, see, tell him just gotta type in the meeting code and the password, you know?
You have version.
I'll, I'll, I'll. I wouldn't call his cell phone and make see his phone or. Test him maybe and see. Sorry, it's his first time, he hasn't done it before, so. We practiced a little bit, but he's.
Let y'all turn that air on back here. That's good, though. We got Mary over here, she's fanning, I don't know if she's been working the dairy this morning. Well, it's a hundred and ten degrees outside, Mary, you need a little air.
Hello?
Hello.
I shouldn't even be here, Jay, all this going on, we should've gotten this taken care of on Tuesday. I should be in Ria Dosa right now enjoying the monsoons and playing on my elk.
Is it? Monsoons in Ria Dosa?
There's monsoon and it's just season four, you know, it gets about eighty and then it rains and drops to fifty-eight.
Yeah.
I think of that every day and I blame you because I'm not there.
Well, if my plane was still working, I'd just load you up and fly you out there. Although, you wouldn't wanna fly with me.
I really wouldn't, no. I'll just meet you there.
When I say high F R, I say I fly ruins.
But Jay, I have no doubt, after having to deal with the governor of New Mexico, you the man, Jay, you the man.
Is that three, sub two three?
No, that's him on the right, but it's connecting to his audio. I don't know if it's sounding good.
Can you hear us, Bruce? Bye, Father. I need you guys to be intentional. I brought a map of the current MMD and what is actually not in the MMD, how far do you go? You go all the way over here?
Cover this one.
You cover this whole thing?
This whole thing will be protected.
And see, the, the, the MMD's only in a very limited area.
That's, that's all, that's all our jurisdiction.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody got the truth today.
He might have to push something, is he on his computer or cell phone?
I don't know.
He probably has a cell phone or that phone.
It's probably asking him to, if he's got earphones in or if he wants to use the speaker or, I don't know, it's probably waiting on him to click some sort of. And Bruce, you there?
Guys, I was letting the plant know that, um, we did a change.org, um, petition on the subdivisions and I think we got, what, a hundred and twenty? Hundred twenty-one people's support, meaning they're not eligible to vote, but they wanted to make sure that there's some votes behind you.
What is it?
Um, a change.org petition that was put out in the communities and people that live out there who can't vote, um, but want their voices recognized, there were a hundred and twenty of them.
I think they need to call it a different name for it, it's a little weird, except what I call it.
Not very zoomy, is it?
He's simply on his cell phone and he's got the speaker up. Hard to body it, I'm not sure what I can do though, oh, it's trying to connect again.
Can you leave it?
No, no, he hasn't, his auto, yeah, here we go. Okay. Let me unmute that.
It's just a boomer problem.
Okay, Bruce, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, all right.
Howdy. All right, special meeting commissioners, Court Liberty County, Texas, it's thirty-first day of July, it's about one-ten, and we'll, uh, gather in. Yeah. Before we start, I want to lay a few little rules down for y'all, okay? No shouting, no speaking out of turn, if you have something to say, just let me know and I will recognize you, okay? But we're not going back and forth today. We do have, uh, Mayor Walker has asked to speak and Ms. Osobito has asked to speak also, and this is to set a date and time and location for a public hearing, during which the commission court of Liberty County will consider whether to grant petition and order an election to creation versus service district number eight located in Eastside, Plumb Grove. All we're doing today is setting the date, a time and a place for the public hearing where they will vote on that date, okay? We're not voting today, all we're gonna do is set a time, a place, and a date where we have the next public hearing and we'll vote that day, okay? Is that the way?
That's it.
Okay. But, you get three minutes each, okay? And sometimes we'll go a little bit. Anyway, um, we still need to get our date set, uh, parameters of the date set as well, so, and we'll leave that just a minute.
Sure.
But, uh, Mayor or Ms. Osobito, whoever wants to be first, please come up and, and visit with us.
I'm gonna use this time, hi y'all, Mayor Liam Pinton Walker, City of Plum Grove, um, I wanna use this time to just clear up a few misconceptions from the last hearing. I wanted to show this to you, if you guys will look at that, can you see it? The only place the MMD is, is where it's orange. Everything else you see there, look at all those little lots, and there's even more because they haven't got them on the deal, those are not in Colony Ridge's El Norte MMD, nor MUD. So, for him to tell you that everything his MMD is already over it, that is false, and I just wanted to prove that to you today, because the one thing I'm not gonna sit in this commissioners' meeting is sit here and let people call me a liar. So, he does not have his MMD all over the district, just in a certain area. Many of the subdivisions are not in the MMD or MUD, are we clear on that, guys? Okay, secondly, there was a lot of conversations going on about Colony Ridge and El Norte do not support the E S D. Well, that's not true. We get a change.org petition within the communities and they are not eligible to vote, either they're DAGA or they do not have the status to vote, or they live in an apartment in Houston and only come out here on the weekend. We got a hundred and twenty signatures from his subdivisions. So, for Colony Ridge to say their subdivisions don't support this is, again, false. The developer may not support it, but y'all don't work for the developer, you work for the constituents. Now, I'm going to make another point here today, I just hate that Leon's not here. Now.
Where is he?
Is he here, Leon, I'm glad you're here. Um, this body, this commissioner court, supported Colony Ridge getting an MMD and a MUD. I would like to ask you, Judge, did you travel to Austin to support the MMD and the MUD on behalf of Colony Ridge and go to the Capitol and be a part of hearings? And support it? Did you?
Yes.
Yes, he tried it on taxpayer money to go to Austin to support a MMD that did not allow the people to vote, his constituents, he just put it on. Greg Arthur went with him. Leon Wilson and Greg Arthur voted for the MMD to be backed in this court. Mike McCarty and Eddie Lowery voted no. Who broke the tie to support the MMD, Judge? I can pull the minutes for you.
Please do.
It was you.
Okay.
You supported that MMD and MUD, you broke the tie.
That was what, three years ago?
Twenty seventeen. And you broke the tie to tell the people in those community, I'm gonna overrule you and say that your developer can put a MUD and MMD on your property without your vote and your consideration.
I owned all the property in the MUD and MMD, I didn't buy any of them.
I'm really sick of that, if you want me to keep my mouth shut when he's speaking, make him keep his mouth shut.
We're gonna, chill, yeah, just chill.
Okay. So, then we go on, are we not connecting over here, Ms. Chambers? The screen looks like something's going wrong with it.
Um, yeah, it looks like it crashed, you know?
Let, I would, I would like to take back my time at this time until she gets that fixed, I'd like to recall my time.
Well, let's see here.
Will you check your internet?
Did the internet go down?
Yeah, it's showing the globe down there instead of the fan running.
Welcome to the life of Plum Grove, the internet's down.
Over on the far right, uh, see some thread?
Uh, we're back.
No, 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 that's you, Jay.
Jay, I'll stay back over here on my ads, I don't like people dropping at me on Facebook about being too close to y'all. You either, Matthew.
No, sorry, click on it around here. No, wait a minute. Well, let's see. Did y'all find y'all studio?
Yes. City of Liberty makes sure we do that.
Actually, probably that's the only way to go, however. I can try to start it again.
I think it's your, for whatever reason, I think we need to get off the network and get back on.
So, just restart the whole thing?
Yeah, just, just go down to the, the whole globe down there.
Hello? Yes, sir, the internet went down in the courthouse and so everything froze up, um, we're trying to get it restarted right now. But our inter, our inter. Uh-huh. Um, yeah, I might have to just restart a new meeting, um. Okay, well, just hang on with that for a minute and see if I can get reconnected with the internet and it should come right back up. It's not, um, well, now, now it's telling me to leave the meeting, so I'm not really sure, we're probably gonna have to restart the meeting, but if you don't have any internet, I don't know that we can do it at all. Um, do you, you think they could vote over the phone? Jay, could they vote over the phone?
We're not voting today, all we're gonna do is set a date and time, place.
Oh, I thought that was what, mushed us, set the date and time, place, that's what we're not voting on.
Yeah, believe it, I think we, we have to be liable and make sure that the public can see it.
Okay, okay, um.
Hit, just hit disconnect and reconnect.
You wanna try, try doing that?
Yeah.
He's sitting right here, okay, now we're back up, let me, let me see if I can get this back up in here.
Night.
You back in? Oh, my goodness, that's.
Wait, is he here?
Yeah.
If you, if you happen, hang up right there.
Okay, hang up, yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
All right, is everybody there?
I'm here.
Where are you?
All right, all right. Hey, hang on, one thing though, let me make sure you're still alive on YouTube, it looks like you are, but let me double check. Um, no, it looks like you're still going, so. All right, you're good, go ahead.
No tampering about that?
Yeah.
That's all right. So, my point I was making is that Greg Arthur, Leon Wilson, I mean, not Leon, and Jay Knight, your judge, they traveled on your tax dime, on your lodging or their gas, all of you paid for it, so that he could go support Colony Ridge's MUD and MMD in a hearing and get legislation. Bless his heart, Ernest Bells did bomb it down one time, but because of these gentlemen right here pushing and pushing and Cleveland I S D being so overrun, that Trey did a little deal that said, I'll give you some land if you'll back my MMD, check the dates on the deeds, he didn't offer that land in the beginning, he held him out for ransom for that land so they would support his MMD and MUD.
Let's stick to America's word here.
So, while we're here today is that the E S D, the E S D, why in the world, and your drainage district too, Judge, you got one of those through legislation too that the people didn't know about that's now in their account. The people know about this, a hundred and twenty people signed the petition to take it to vote, a hundred and twenty people who are not eligible to vote in his communities, they backed it up too. Then you told me that there was no, he said, no, hasn't been a year. Last night, each one of you received an email from me with a video in it from two thousand eleven where there was a forest fire from his construction. I also have another video, I have dozens and dozens, and I look forward to bringing them to you at the next meeting, and I'll do a PowerPoint for you. But we also have videos of our firefighters and our fire chiefs because the developer allowed them to just go by a lot anywhere without any infrastructure and water installed, and they would set their fires that our volunteers would go fight and there would be no water. So, they'd have to leave the fire to go fill up their fire trucks again. I don't know what kind of a developer would let you go and work on your property when there's no fire access for water, but they did. So, who was impacted for nine years, this fire department? They want the right to vote, it's just a vote, in his district, I'm so sorry, his district, Greg, Jay, Ms. Chambers, it's just the orange part. You see the rest of that map? His MMD's not there. He gave you a false pretense when he stood in front of this court and told you his MMD was all over it and that there would be overlap. And to the best of my knowledge, and I called a couple of the attorneys that work for my phone, my firm, that are also specialists in E S Ds, and Matthew, you're the specialist for this court, not Colony Ridge attorneys, we really don't like it when we see them giving you advice, you're the county attorney. So, here we are, and if the rate Colony Ridge is going with not standing up to specific performance in their development agreement, who knows? The City of Plum Grove may shrink that MMD back to the original size. I'll be back, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Osobito.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Judge, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Maria Osobito and I am a property owner, lot two eighteen, Camino Real. Y'all all know of me because when I met you guys, it was what? Fire extinguishers, one-way in, I mean, fire hydrants, one-way in and one-way out, Valero gas station on the corner, people's safety, that's what this was about when I first started. Then, as I was starting to find out, a lot of homeowners could not get their homes, buy new homes, like mobile homes or anything like that, because there's no fire hydrant, they couldn't get insurance, and it would be like a force insurance on the lawn. So, I decided that me as a property owner, and I sent you all the map and my property appraiser, there's no. Did you see that, Steve? There's no, um, MMD on my property, I'm in Camino Real, lot two eighteen. So, you see? So, what happens is, is I reached out to the community, which are my brother-sister communities, and I was a little bit discouraged when I seen the last video, that's why I made effort to be here today, because I was concerned with the fire safety for Rancho San Vicente. I brought it in and I had a reporter do about all the fire burning back there, everybody's seen it, long story short, that's been my mind, my main priority. I've witnessed Plum Grove Volunteer Fire Department back to back to back, I'm out there almost every day. There was one day we were out there with the reporter and there was like, how many fires were out there that day? Do you don't mind answering?
I'm not sure.
The day when I was out there, the reporter was out there with me, where it jumped from one lot and then it went to the developers' lot, well, it was just.
I would say four or five.
Four or five, please, no water whatsoever in the area, closest place, Dollar General. So, I just worry because when somebody is awarded the MMD, and I reached out to state of Texas, um, in Austin, and I was like, I need to know how is this MMD formatted? Per Ernest Bells, they forwarded me the laws, rules he used. So, and there is a paragraph in here says he has a right to contract with another area, he may establish his own and work together, and it's in there. So, I feel that, how long will it take for a developer to pre-site, develop the land, get up and running for force? Let's be noble here, a couple of years? To build a fire department? So, he's already been since two thousand seventeen, when he got the MMD, he was concerned about subdividing property, he was not worried, and by the way, we're not his people, we bought from him, he treats us like, when he said that, no, what I'm saying is.
Don't go there, stay to the center.
But that's what I'm trying to say. So, long story short, when it was developed, instead of subdividing property, he should've worried about the safety for the people. So, all of a sudden, the E S D comes to the table and all of a sudden, everything goes downhill. Here's all the lots, Bella Vista, Montebello, Gran San Jacinto, Rancho San Vicente, Camino Real. We have eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight lots, and he did not worry about our safety. That's what this is about, safety. And I've always told you guys, quality of life, and Mr. Poston, you know, I, what I've talked about, the quality of life and the safety. I have never said anything bad about the developer, I've always said, he's a very intelligent man, only if he can do things a little different, yes or no? So, what I'm seeing here is subdividing property was his main thought, some people do get sidetracked, but I kept complaining for six months, safety, fire hydrants, fire trucks, this, that, what's going on? Nothing, nothing has been done until the E S D came. And right here, I have the petition that I have, hundred and twenty-one signatures, and I will forward it if you need me to. These are the Spanish community who, one, does not have the status to vote. two, their children are either too young to vote, but does have the status, or three, like me, I could vote, but I'm in Harris County, I have homestead of my house, and they say I have to stick into my district where they sent me to vote. So I'm one of those that cannot vote, but unfortunately, it's nothing personal against the developer, it's what's right. The Plum Grove Volunteer Fire Department has been, for me, I've seen them for the last, since two thousand eighteen, since I've owned the property out there. I've spoke with my community, my people, brother sisters, communities, and they all tell me the same thing. There's one guy in here that put, "Why'd you leave Santa Fe off your petition?" And I was like, "Because out of respect, that's his area, and that's what he's fighting for, I don't wanna be sour, patch kid here." So pretty much what I said was, you know, "Oh, you too," so he put a comment. So I'm just saying, it's safety. You went to Austin, everybody went to Austin, thank you for giving us this wonderful MMD that hasn't done no safety for us till today's date.
Thank you. I do have one question for everyone here. How many of y'all actually understand what a special district is?
Who are you speaking with?
Just me, Leon.
Hello.
Just me. One, two people.
What? I didn't hear the question.
Actually understands what is a special district.
It's to help a developer, for this year, the special district, it says to help a developer pretty much bring economic to the area, jobs, safety.
There's a whole lot.
Sidewalks.
How many different types of special districts are there?
Depends what area we're talking about, I see them all the time in Harris.
It lives on the ballpark of eighty-seven, sir.
Uh, let's see, bids, public improvement districts, TERS, city third of those. Uh, we have agreements, you know, with city of Cleveland and city of Dayton with TERS, special districts. Uh, these help developers to get start, fast track. Uh, MMDs, MUDs, probably in Harris County alone, there's probably at least four thousand, maybe five thousand MUDs, and they never go away. But they're a tool for a developer to use to get faster development done, and that's the way it's, it's been since I became a member, since I got out of school, that's when I've always noticed. It, uh, in each of these districts are delineated, they're drawn out, the boundaries of it. And, and, and this particular instance, the MMD, to my understanding, and I'm gonna ask Trey a question, there was nothing there when you set up an MMD?
That's absolutely correct, it was all land that I owned, and it was all vacant land.
It was vacant land, nothing there.
That's right, and everybody that's bought in their sense, signs of disclosure, that lets them know that they're buying in an area that's in, inside of an MMD, and that they have a thirty-five cent property tax and a penny and a half sales tax.
That's not on my documents.
Well, you're not in the.
Not on there.
Can I add something to the, to the Michael culture?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
So the an, is this, this line?
Yeah.
So the answer to the judge's question, when we, we have my districts created, the land that was part of the district, one hundred percent of the land that was in the district, was owned explicitly by Colony Ridge and wasn't sold to anyone. Um, and then, at, before we sold any land that inside the districts, the districts, uh, those customers see a disclosure and sign a disclosure that, that tells them that there, there will be in a MUD or an MMD, and the tax rate, actual tax rate will be thirty-five cents, and they'll have a sales tax of a penny and a half. And so, just to set the record straight, the, the maps that they have are outdated maps, and there's a lot of that property, uh, that has been since.
I grabbed it from.
Into the MMD, um, and a lot of the property there that I own, that's not in the district today, will be in the district before I develop. And so, um, even at their own admission, they say, "My customers can't vote." Well, the, the twenty thousand people that are there, um, if they can't vote, how would an election be fair and represent them? And then of the other fifteen thousand property owners that are there, that don't live there, like Ms. Oscevito, that don't own a district and don't want the extra tax, how would their voice be heard if you had an election? Right, so there's another, additional fifteen, sixteen thousand lots that have been purchased by people that, who intend to live there, but don't live there today. So it would be absolutely unfair to them to put them in a district today without their voice, without the government voice, so that's.
Now, my understanding is, if you have an existing development with people living in that development, you can't absorb them into an MMD or MUD.
You can add to Matthew, that would hit, he'll answer, but no, I cannot, not unless every person in there with signed petition to be annexed into the MMD.
Exactly.
I can't annex a city, I can't annex any property with my district unless they petition to be annexed.
Matthew, is that.
Well, I can't, I'd say that, I can't remember if it's petition, but there, it does require their consent on some level.
Yep, I can't even have a, I can't even, 'cause I'll ask, I can't even have an election to see if, say, one of my subdivision, that's not a district, would want to be in the district, unless, can't do that. Uh, Tim Green said enough, so, uh, and I'm using my district expert, so, um, I believe, I'm confident his conclusion, so. Um, there's no way that I annex anything that I don't own, yeah, so.
There it is. Okay, that was one point I wanted to get across, was when you formed the MMD, there was nothing there.
That's right.
Raw land, and you didn't start development on that property until after that was completed, completed, gone through the legislature.
Yes, sir.
Two ways could go to you to be created, either by legislative action or by TCEQ.
Correct.
Commissioners' court can't say that you can do it, it goes straight through the legislature.
Yes, correct. And for Liberty County, in defense of you, your actions and Greg's actions, um, the district will do great things for Liberty County, it will be a partner for Liberty County, and it'll be a partner, um, to enhance the quality of life in the neighborhoods that are under the MMD. And I think you're aware of the powers in the district and my purpose for creating the MMD, and that's all you supported.
That's right. There were restrictions included, if I remember, if I remember right, as far as the negotiation goes, so. There was a reason behind everything that is done. Support even not only through our body, but also through Ernest Bells, so, Nicholas, let's take notes.
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to clarify that, uh, was there anything else?
Oh, one other thing, Leanne said, "I didn't give you land at the school until Ernest made me do land at the school." Well, there's nothing in my legislation, Maria has a copy of legislation in front of her, I'd love to see where it says in the legislation that I'm required to do land at school.
I have just the laws of the formation of it, what he can't even do.
It's okay.
That's the district.
Yeah, it is, so it's one that there's still ongoing discussions with the school district from Orlando, you know, I know that as well.
Yeah, I'm ready to work on it right now.
Yeah, I understand that. Now, one other thing I want to make sure, that something was mentioned a while ago about a, uh, for, the Liberty County forming a transition district. Okay, let me give you the background on that as well. That was done through legislative action, we requested. Is, is there really a taxing entity right now for Liberty County transition district? No, there's not. It gave us permission to farm it, it hasn't been farmed yet, therefore, there's no taxation, so how we get money to make it work? What it does right now is gives us the opportunity to farm the body, get the bylaws written, get members on the board, and then we go after grants. And we will not go after ad libor taxation to support this until we have the grants, which would provide us with studies and with a, an overall plan, transition plan for the county. There it is.
And that's in the process of being done now.
That's in the process of being done now.
An overall guidance plan for the county.
One last thing, and I'll sit down, I do have a concern about, um, Leanne and some of her friends in Plum Grove lying to the people in Plum Grove to take advantage of them, to scare them, that they're gonna be, if they don't approve the ESD, that they're, that I'm gonna put them inside my MMD, and a thirty-five cent tax instead of a six cent tax.
You can't do that.
No, that's absolutely true, I just wanted that to be for the record, that's.
You can't do that, sir. Unless they petition, and then I believe you have to bring up to vote with the members that are requesting to be included. And that's the way it was explained to me for the last.
That's where it is. Thank you, Judge.
Now, one other thing too, Bill, are you on here?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Is there anything in the state statute anywhere that you can think of that says that a developer has to include fire hydrants in a development?
No, sir, and, and you know, we recently just adopted international fire codes, and that was the fourteenth of July, so in the past, he's gonna be grandfathered in, um, so there's, there's nothing the state statute says that he has to have it.
Excuse me. The reason is.
Come up here, I can hear you, is Greg?
When, this.
Greg came here here.
Yes, this is what happened, it would have been on the plan if they plotted it correctly, because when Louis Bergman. It's Maria Oscevito, when Louis Bergman did, when Louis Bergman did the plat for, um, a gentleman that arrived before the developer, they stated it was ten acre lots, and it was septic and well. Per the plat, you're supposed to put who is your water source and who is your sewer or septic. That's on the plat, yes or no? So the plat was replatted, Rancho San Vicente replatted, when they replatted it, there still was not a TCEQ public water supply. They piggybacked into the sister neighborhood, which is Bella Vista, and that's how the fire hydrants did not get on the plans. Because in Camino Real, I'm gonna pull the plans that I got from Land Plan, it shows fire hydrants. They should never put a gas station on a corner, one way in, one way out, without a fire hydrant or above the ground storage tank. So that's how that came about.
One question, Ms. Oscevito.
Mm-hmm.
When something's replatted, what does it do to the previous plat?
Well, you gotta know who's your water, it wasn't septic.
Was it not?
It did obsolete it, but what was your water supply? The water doesn't go away, no matter if you replat eight times, what, per the subdivision rules that are given to me two thousand four, what is your water source, what is your sewer or septic source? You gotta state. It says it on the plat, the engineer's supposed to put it on there, you either go put your public water supply number, or you could say that, you know, it's well, or it's a public water supply. You have to put that on your plat, I've been doing plats for twenty plus years, all through the United States. It's a requirement, how are you getting your water, is your water reserved? Because a lot of people don't realize, you're just gonna open up a neighborhood and start pumping water subsides. Even though Liberty County doesn't have a subside district like Harris County, Alston County, that observes and watches, doesn't mean you're doing things right. When, what happens when you start pumping, let's say, I'm one homeowner, in my house, I use ten thousand gallons of water a month. Ten thousand gallons of water a month, times the fifteen thousand lots, what happens? Property subsides. That's what happens, it doesn't come, it comes out quick, but the reserve doesn't come back quick. So that's how it goes.
When you get off on the scientific side of that, all day long.
One more thing.
Judge, if I may, uh, Judge, if I may, that, that's a completely separate item. Uh, you know, fire protection and residential uses, two different items, so.
Right.
Just a, I, I don't know if you can, split you now.
Well, you know, it's always been up the discretion of the developer to include fire hydrants or not, and that is in the statute itself, so.
Correct.
Some do, some don't, but that, all the times, it goes in the negotiation, yeah, Leon?
Yeah. Uh, it was called remembers, on members' occasions, since I've, uh, uh, taken this precinct board position, I've actually tried many times with those subdivision of developers to put in, uh, fire hydrants. And we, and we had no, uh, we had no recourse, uh, because, uh, we had nothing to implement, they had to, to be able to do that for the developers.
Right, that's always been a part of.
So we have, we have, we definitely have given a great thought to that. And we just did not have the power to make, uh, uh, the developers include those fire hydrants.
Right.
Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, Trey Harris likes to put words in my mouth that I wish he wouldn't. I've never told anybody that Trey was gonna take over the fire department. But here are some facts for you, that if we don't get the ESD going, that the irresponsible growth that this commission allowed is going to suffocate what little fire we have now. And in time, the developer will tell those other lot owners, he will do a petition one day, and say, "If you want those same services," 'cause he told me he was going to do this. These are words from Trey Harris's mouth to mine. He has every intention of getting his landowners that live on those lots to want to go into his MMD to get services provided to them. And so how do you do that? You suffocate out Plum Grove's fire department, and then his MMD says, "Hey, I'm going to give you those services." And when you get those services, we in El Norte, my family controls the MMD along with Brent Lane, we're gonna charge you thirty-five cents, and we're gonna provide you fire services. Now, that's how Trey Harris's mouth to me. My words are, would you rather be in the Plum Grove ESD and pay six cents and get the firemen that have been out there and held the mother when the father shot his little boy, letting play with a gun? And it was Plum Grove volunteer firemen that are volunteer youth out there, and they're holding the dead child and the mother screaming? That was Plum Grove Fire Department. During Harvey, they rescued over three hundred and evacuated his owners in, in our district. So it's not like they haven't been prefer, and water rescues, good Lord! Teach them, don't drown, turn around, don't drive into the floodwaters. Because our guys have had to take swift water rescue to rescue a bus full of students who were trying to get to his developments and couldn't during May seventh of last year, that the school district had to keep eight hundred kids at home, at the school to spend the night, because all of his roads were flooded due to his poor drainage. And that was just a good ten inches of rain, and Melville was another story. So no, I have not told anyone, they're gonna get stuck in Plum Grove with Trey Harris's development, thirty-five cents. But I have told the people out there what you told me, Mr. Harris, that you have every intention of trying to get them to sign petitions and hold a vote, so they'll go into your MMD and you can charge them thirty-five cents. I'm telling the people out there, and the people of Plum Grove, why would you want somebody that has absolutely no idea what they're doing running your fire department? When Plum Grove's been doing it now since two thousand eleven, they only wanna charge you six cents. And you'll be able to help sit on that board. We won't be like Colony Ridge and remove everybody off our MMD, MUD, and El Norte board in order to run a monopoly.
Okay. Now.
Make sure.
Everybody's had an opportunity to say something, I'm gonna get the last word. Okay. It's education time. Plum Grove was incorporated in nineteen sixty-eight, if I'm not mistaken, December of nineteen sixty-eight, by a vote of the people there. And the reasons for incorporation is stated plainly, to find a way to get grants to help in the flooding problem in Plum Grove. It's always flooded here, if I'm not mistaken, that was even written in the, in the, uh, the reason, it's always flooded here. And I know that they used the every opportunity they had to get grants either through, uh, well, they didn't have what a FEMA back then, but USDA, HUD, to aid them in whatever method they could get to alleviate any kind of flooding problem in Plum Grove. So they incorporated in nineteen sixty-eight, became a city, they had a city council, they have a mayor, a city secretary, and for a while even had a city hall until it washed away. Not completely washed away, it got pretty wet. Not completely washed away, it got pretty wet. Things rocked along pretty well. Uh, you know, nineteen seventy-six, I was in college, so I'm just going back and looking at things now. Uh, sixty-eight, seventy-six, I believe it was, there was resolution number eight that was passed by Plum Grove City Council that gave all of the permitting powers of the city of Plum Grove to the permitting department of Liberty County, which is now called Liberty County Engineering. Does Plum Grove, or did Plum Grove at that time, have any kind of restrictions written for their city? No. Do they have any kind of restrictions currently written for that city? No. Any restrictions that came about for, uh, the Plum Grove area or anything that's subsequent to that time fell into the rules of the county, which we have no restrictive power. We have four things that we can anticipate in our regulation, water, sewer, ditches, and roads. That's it. So, municipality once again is a city unto themselves. So, in order for them to have any funds, normally they would go about setting up some, some kind of property tax. But for fifty-something years, you've never had one. You do have one now. Congratulations, I'm glad you do. But you relied on probably franchise taxes through power companies or whatever that came through there to give y'all some money every year to at least help you out a little bit. So we're riding along here. We get to this point where you say it's irresponsible development. How many of y'all out there today have ever read, sent down a red local government code two thirty-two? Entire, two thirty-two. I have. Now, I would encourage you to, okay. I would encourage you to do some. Read local government code two thirty-two. It deals with developments, subdivisions, and a county in Texas. It gives all the rules that legislature has adopted by law that we have to follow. And there's some neat little terms in there. For instance, a city right now has more teeth, they have restrictive power. They can tell you if you could have a chicken coop in your backyard, that he'd be running loose down the street. They can also tell you what you're gonna build your homes out of. They can tell you also if you're gonna have curb and gutter streets, concrete streets, open ditches or not. A city can do this. A county cannot. We cannot do that. There's a thing called rights of property owners. Everybody here has rights. They have their property. And you can do on your property as you please. That's at least, that's what we hope. Now, in a city, you can't do that because they have, what, restrictions? And they're gonna tell you what you can have. In the county, we don't have any. We don't have any. I can't tell, uh, Chief Beal if he can build a house out of pallets and tarp paper. That's his property and that's his home. Yeah, it is. You might get off into fire codes and such as that, and life safety codes and such, but still, as far as this body's concerned, we don't have that power. Now, there's the, uh, the merits of when a plat is turned in to the county. We have preliminary plats first, we look it over. That's not the final plat. The final plat comes later and it's always gonna be reviewed. And prior to twenty fifteen, uh, I'm not really sure how to review it. But after twenty fifteen, we did something completely different. And now we have LGA that does our review. And we receive a letter from LGA Engineering that states that this plat meets all the requirements that are set aside by the rules and regulations of Liberty County, which, uh, most recently that, uh, book was adopted in twenty seventeen. On the twenty-eighteenth, excuse me. Now, a municipality has, say, for instance, uh, Maria, you have, you own property in a city, a municipality. And you wanna develop. You have fifty acres. And you plat this out and it's engineered correctly, you bring it to the city, they review it. They have thirty days to say yes or no.
Sometimes longer.
Uh, well, it depends. If they find a reason to deny the plat, then they're gonna give the opportunity to correct it. But they have thirty days to say yes or no. If they don't do it, give you an answer in thirty days. And there's mandates. They can file with the mandates, go to district court and make, you can make them accept it. In a county, it's sixty days. So for instance, she turned in a plat and the other incorporated there to the county. We receive it, we review it, we send it through our engineering department. Uh, they bug it to LGA, who is our consulting engineer. They send us a letter back saying it meets all the requirements. It's okay. If for some reason we find a reason that, uh, it's not okay, then we go back with corrective action and the clock starts over again. But still, we have sixty days to accept this plat. If we don't accept it in sixty days, then guess what? They can sue us in district court and make us accept it. Okay? So when you say irresponsible development.
I didn't say irresponsible development.
I know you didn't. I'm just trying to get this clarified.
Oh.
A developer, a developer is in the business to develop land, set up homesites. And that is their primary business. That's what they do for a living. That's what they're gonna do, continue on. Um, they are the ones that have deciding factor. They own the land. They have the rights to do with that land as they please.
Mm-hmm.
Whenever they turn in the plat, there it is. Um, irresponsible development, you call it as you wish, anybody can call it that. I call it development as development that is, uh, at least we have the oversight to look at and at least sit down and negotiate aspects of each development to where it's beneficial to everyone. So these things just now kicked in in twenty fifteen because they weren't looked at prior. But since this court has been together, we have looked at it extensively. And a lot of the things that you've seen in the past won't transpire in the future. Just want to get that clarified because there's a lot of things.
Mine. And and when you say development, say land development, because when you say development, everybody's thinking he's doing, mine is just property. I bought the property.
Yeah.
So was it, it was just land development on mine?
Right. I think you live in Tom Ball and you have to vote there, is that?
And and I live in Spring.
Okay, okay, that's great. All right. Anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. So, everybody had their chance to speak? I just want to get my, on a Friday afternoon. Okay. We still need to set a date, time, and location for the hearing. And we have to do this plat, if I'm not mistaken, prior to August the seventeenth.
You have to order an election, uh, at least by August the seventeenth, yes, sir.
We have a date, Matthew, that you.
That's, yeah, so there's kind of two tracks here. So, um, the the path, kind of, not talking about election code stuff, but the under, uh, uh, under the health and safety code. So, ESD, we have to set a date, time, give notice before that. After approving a petition at that hearing, then you have to, uh, uh, have the notice uh, uh, for an election under, uh, under that petition. You also have to order the election under the election code. So, uh, my understanding from Clint is that if if you order the election by August seventeenth, you know, you still have an opportunity to pull it back if for whatever reason the court doesn't approve the petition, okay? But, uh, the for, in order to be able to make the deadline, uh, under the health and safety code, we need to, uh, have the hearing no sooner than August the twenty-fifth, which is, uh, uh, we, you know, been over, looking over the notice, creating, creating the notice. And that's what we've planned. Is it nine or eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
Okay, eight thirty.
Regular commission court would be along what?
Okay, so it's eight thirty? And what's the date?
August.
Uh, August twenty-fifth.
In this courtroom.
Good. So that would, that will be the date for the vote to either allow the ESD?
Right. At that hearing, uh, you look to, there's several things, for whether, uh, it is feasible, whether it will promote the, uh, safety, welfare of the community. Uh, and then you, uh, approve it, and, uh, if it does so, and fix the boundaries of of the ESD.
Matthew? We have a call.
Well, yeah, that'll have to be.
Yes, that can be put on the eleventh, I believe, at that regular session. So they could vote on whether to call the election on the eleventh, that would get it in by the seventeenth, but they would still have the option on the twenty-fifth of whether to, yeah, so.
So, the eleventh, is that the Commissioner's Court, regular commission court?
Right.
That's the next one.
Okay, so we need to, at that meeting.
Order the election.
Order the election. And we will do that in regular court, right?
Regular court, yes. August twenty-fifth, you will consider the merits of the petition, so.
Okay. And Matthew, what if the court doesn't wanna order an election?
Uh, well, then, uh, there might be some issues. All right, uh, then it would have to, uh, I researched that specifically, but it would probably have to come up, uh, at the next special election date.
All right, so today, set a, setting the time and location for the public hearing. Which Commissioner's Court of Liberty County consider whether to grant a petition and order an election for the creation of emergency service district number eight located in the areas for that. And we have decided that oh eight thirty, August twenty-fifth, for that, the ready commission, the date, okay? So, in this room, in this room, yeah. And the eleventh, uh, of August, that'll be a prior date to the twenty-fifth, we will actually be able to vote to order the election itself. And we'll go back and look at the merits, uh, after that date, to decide whether we wanna pull that order or allow that order, correct?
Yes.
I think before that order becomes official, there has to be twenty-one days of notice posted, kind of like this, it's going on the paper, et cetera, et cetera. So it gives you a little bit of a.
Gives us a little buffer.
Little buffer, yeah.
So we're getting down to wire?
Yeah, very down to the wire.
Okay. So, you got all that? There's no vote at, uh, required today?
Yes, there is.
There is, yeah.
Now, with, not, not to set anything on the eleventh, that's not necessary.
Right.
Today's the vote to set the hearing for August twenty-fifth at eight thirty-eight AM.
Okay, so, you'll make the motion tonight? Greg, you'll make the motion to set the, uh, uh, the hearing date for oh eight thirty, August twenty-fifth, hearing, Commissioner's Court?
Uh, yeah.
All right, we got a motion to set the date and the time and the place. Need a second? That's now like Leon, okay. Got a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye. And there I see, okay. All right, that is court motion just carries. And I think that's all the business we have this afternoon. If I'm not mistaken, it's out of, so.
Yeah, that's it.
Did motion adjourn? Got one? Leon, you'll make a second on that? All right, all in favor?